I'd like to welcome you to the November fifteenth regular board district meeting. Can I get roll call, please? Yes, Mrs. Gleason?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Campworth here. Mrs. List here. Ms. Sterns?
Yeah.
Mr. Wickham?
Here.
Mrs. Russell?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item two on our agenda, board minute approval. Can I get a motion to approve the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye. Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
I'm seeing.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the November first, twenty twenty-two special and closed meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye. Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
All right, moving on to communications, comments from the public. Do we have any public comments? All right, moving on, going on to reports. Our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Today, November fifteenth marks the official statewide observance of School Board Members' Day in Illinois. School Board Members' Day is an occasion to recognize board members who serve as volunteers for the benefit of the students and the community. They act as the frontline education advocates, providing a local voice and a vision for the district by putting in place the educational priorities of area residents. On behalf of the entire District two twenty-eight community, I thank you for your commitment to Bremen District two twenty-eight. Yezmeen is going to go around, please accept a small token of our appreciation. In addition, Board Member Gleason at last meeting was recognized for her legacy status, and we're waiting for her special recognition from the ISBA. The President, Russell, and Board Member Johnson have also received recognition for being an established board leader. So thank you tonight for your service and congratulations on your achievements. We even have a little certificate from ISBA for your award there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sepura. While that's occurring, can we get our FOIA report?
Absolutely. Since our last board, regular board meeting, Mrs. Russell, we've received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. Sherry Reed from Smart Pro Cure requested all purchasing records from one seven, twenty twenty-two to current to include purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, including quantity and price, vendor ID number, name, address, and contact information. This request has been completed. And that is all for FOIA requests.
Thank you. Moving on to principal reports.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Bremen High School, we would like to highlight our Bremen Athletic Fall Season, our Crush Country program, our Girls Varsity Crush Country conference champion, as well as sportsmanship award for the SSC Conference. Paige Gavin was honored as Coach of the Year, and our boys and girls both were team sectional qualifiers. In regards to golf, we had two sectional qualifiers. For girls volleyball, our volleyball girls program was honored with the SSC Blue Sportsmanship Award. In regards to soccer, both our varsity and our JV boys soccer teams were conference champions. Sal Legunis was Conference Player of the Year, as well as recognized as All-State. And then finally, with football, our football program was nine and two overall. We defeated Washington High School thirty-five to seven in the first round. Dan Stell was honored as SSC Coach of the Year, as well as our team in regards to the Team Sportsmanship Award. And today, Brian Townsend was honored as First Team Six Eight All-State.
Good afternoon, good evening. Just here to provide an update for Delta Academy. One of the first things that I spoke about last meeting was our new role, which is a counselor. So given that we have a counselor, dedicated counselor now, we've been able to do a lot of college career exploration. Most recently, we've had some tours of South Suburban College and Moraine Valley, including their special programs, which the biggest hit so far was South Suburbans Barbe College. We got a lot of buy-in from our students in that one, so it's nice to be able to kind of see that. Including in career exploration is Cali, my area industrial commission is planning to do a presentation at our school short, in next week, I believe. Also, we've had a field trip to the South Suburban Humane Society in which, first off, I had to tell our staff and students they couldn't bring home any cats. But it did give some career explorations, exploration for our students and also some community service hours, which were great. And also, in addition to all that, we've had multiple branches of the military come in, and it's really amazing to see our students get to dig into what their post-secondary plans on top of their credit recovery. Next, our goals for this year were to come up with incentive programs that were based on productivity and some of our more successful ones. First of all, we're kind of linking our school store to productivity in which students are, can gain points in completing classes and assignments and making progress through classes. In addition, we had the Screen Time Challenge in Mr. Goiney's room, which is surprising. You tell students to put their phones away and it's going to be a struggle, but he was able to kind of finesse it into a challenge, and students were really buying into keeping their phones in their pockets for the duration of the day and setting goals and monitoring their progress, which was really great. And then, in October, we completed the Classroom Challenge, in which all the classrooms competed to see how many classes they could compete. Over all of October, we were able to complete fifty classes. Now, that's split between sixty students, so we are still completing classes with fidelity towards the program. But obviously, the goal of the program is credit completion, and that is what we are doing. And then finally, at the beginning of the year, we, for the first time, we did mental health screeners for all our students, and based off those screeners, we were able to kind of gather the data, along with some other data, and form some counseling groups. Right now, we have an anxiety group that is meeting regularly, and then we are currently forming a young men's group in a, in order to kind of give them the skills that they need to succeed. So a lot of good things going on, and on top of that, we do have many students that are completing their courses towards graduation, which I will speak more on next meeting.
Hi, good evening. Some good news from Oak Forest High School. Oh, I just take off my glasses. All right, let's try that again. So during the month of October, we had many groups organized to fight against cancer. The Oak Forest Soccer, I believe that was the last meeting we had when we did good news reports. I was coming from a soccer game, and they were able to donate three thousand nine hundred dollars to battle childhood cancer. The Bengals Go Pink Game raised nine hundred dollars for the American Cancer Society. Volley for the Cure raised awareness. Our Poms team wrote letters for the child of a fellow Poms coach from one of the junior highs. And for the eighth year in a row, our cheerleaders cheered on the hundred-plus survivors that walked during the Survivor Walk in Centennial Park. Our very own Mike Boniface participated in Real Men Wear Pink, and that's a bit of a challenge because he wears pink every single day in October, sometimes complete pink outfits, and he raised four thousand dollars in that endeavor, so that was great. We also had our second year of the trunk-or-treat activity that's become, quickly become a community favorite. We had eleven hundred community members come through the school in just that three-hour span. So there were nine sports teams that set up out in the parking lot. They did a trunk-or-treat outside, and then twenty-one of our clubs then had the students inside playing all kinds of games and getting their faces painted. Like I said, that's really become a favorite. We definitely have some highlights also in athletics from our fall sports, starting to wrap up here. Our girls tennis team won our first sectional championship since nineteen eighty-seven. They were quite excited when they got back. They knew it had been a while. They got back and went in the gym and saw that it had been quite some time. Some of their parents probably weren't even born back then. But we had Sabrina Sepuentes in first singles, Marina O'Leary in second singles, Katie List and Ally English in first doubles, they all qualified for state. We had some swimmers. Felicity Naughton won the five hundred freestyling sectionals and qualified for state. Joey Lindenmolder won two hundred individual medley at sectionals and also qualified for state. We had a group of four students, Felicity, and then Mia Earl, Fiona O'Neil, and then Joey Lindenmolder qualified for state also in the swim two hundred medley relay. We had several students with all sectional soccer honors. Ian Plankarte, Miguel Zavala, and Adam Jedrazek were all sectional for soccer, and we actually had two honorable mentions also on our soccer team, so Juan Ruiz and Lennon Flores. So soccer had another wonderful season. We had a couple more qualify for state with Mia Nutiel and Abby Frias for state cross-country. Our football team qualified for the state playoffs. And then last week, we had four of our female athletes who all signed letters of intent to play collegiate sports. Haley Wester is going to Saint Xavier to play softball. Jenna Cooper signed for soccer at Loris. Riley Enzing is going as a female wrestler to Wisconsin Stevens Point, and Janay Kent signed with basketball for Louisiana State University. So been busy over there, so thank you.
It's a heck of an athletic program to have.
I know. Thanks, Ron.
I'm here to talk about some good news at Hillcrest. On October seventeenth, we had our art club and several art students go over to advocate South Suburban Hospital to paint inspirational sidewalk murals for the healthcare workers and to support breast cancer awareness. Thanks to Yezmeen and our PR specialist, Michelle Youngberg, for publicizing the event. Hopefully, you saw it, it was on CBS Two News. They did a nice feature on that. The next day, there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Markham, Markham Public Library, where students and teachers from Bremen and Hillcrest collaborated and designed a mural highlighting Nature and Monarch Butterfly. Light-headed for a second there, sorry. Monarch Butterfly and the Love of Reading in one space. Hillcrest had two qualifiers for IHSA State Tennis Tournament. Kalia Wright and Precious Wyndham qualified for the tournament as a doubles team. They had a great season. We had a national letter of intent recently signed. Darian Baker is going to play basketball next year at Akron. He's going to be a zip. On October twenty-fifth, our ecology club, it was, it was a rainy, cold morning. Morton Arboretum came out. Our ecology club planted twenty trees around campus, and we were told by Morton Arboretum that if we add a few more varieties, like two or three more varieties, next year, we can be our own arboretum. We have that many different varieties of trees, who knew? So we'll plan on doing that again next year. But the students that came a little unprepared for the rain and the cold, had, had their garbage bags on and toughed out the, the weather and made a day of it, so it was great. On November third, we had our NHS induction. Thirty-one students who were inducted. Mrs. Gleason came. Appreciate you coming to support our students. And then, on November eighth, this is, this is a little bit of a story. We have a student, Jacquez Thomas, fantastic young man. There was a really nice article written about him in the Chicago Tribune. He's an entrepreneur. He started a company at fifteen, an apparel company called Heartless. And he had, he had a cousin who had passed away from some gun violence, and as a, as a result of that, he wanted to, to put some apparel line out that sort of inspired people to, to kind of think about, it's okay when you, you, you lose a loved one to have sort of a, you know, a mental health day and to have someone sort of pick up your spirits a little bit. He was actually telling me this back last spring about his apparel company, and a student walked by with one of his hoodies on, and he had no idea, and I, I stopped the other student, and I said, is, do you guys know each other? Did he buy it from you? They each said, I, I never met the, never met him before in my life. And, but his apparel was already being purchased by students around the school, so it was a really great story. Jacquez, he's a part of US Rep Robin Kelly's Youth Cabinet. He's a part of Chicago Police and Fire Ambassador Club. He's, you know, a great kid, four point five GPA, NHS VP of Student Council, and if you get a chance, please check out the article, because it was, it was a really, really nice article. Thanks. Sorry I had to sit down.
All right, good evening. Welcome to Simley Park High School. I don't know why they didn't want to get other seats tonight. Come on down. You guys must be a little scared of them. But just a quick, a few quick updates, but before I get started, I want to introduce you to somebody that you're going to see for a little while. So Kelly Eastman, she is our Special Ed Coordinator for Timley and Oak Forest. For those of you that were here that remember Principal Pete, who was doing his principal internship program, Kelly too is doing her principal internship program, so we're definitely putting her to work nice and early. So although she may not necessarily be presenting tonight, she will be presenting at the next board meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that you saw a familiar face, and she's, she was already going to work at our, our SSC Roundtable meeting. So pleasure to have Kelly on board, and she's just fantastic. So I mean, I couldn't pick a better person to work with, so I, I said buckle up, girl, buckle up. So as we go through tonight, just a couple little, a little reviews before we get into kind of the highlight of the evening. I want to thank anybody who attended International Fest, you know, our International Fest just is crazy. It's so awesome. Salima and her crew, and I know she has help from the district schools as well, and thank you for that. It's just such an awesome experience for our kids. Not to mention we eat a lot as well in the cafeteria with all the different types of food that's, that's being offered. So definitely a shout-out to Salima for that. I, I hope that you guys saw, and you know, Yezmeen is going to get a lot of shout-outs tonight. You know, I couldn't have asked for better coverage for our student Reagan Monahan, who actually helped secure a, a car on, you know, the highway when her mom went into a, had a medical emergency while driving. If she, at fifteen years old with her permit, doesn't even have her driver's license, was not able to get that car safely to the side of the road, really, we have no idea what would have happened. So our, our day for Reagan Monahan was a beautiful sunny fall gorgeous day. You know, the, the fire department was here. It was just, it was a great day to celebrate. So I hope you got to see that wonderful coverage, and that happened because of this one right here, so thank you so much. And then tomorrow night, if you're not doing anything, you know, if you're, if this isn't keeping you up late at night, late enough, come out tomorrow to, again, thank you to Cory. We really have an amazing presentation, an amazing opportunity for our parents tomorrow night to actually learn about the CCR requirements that are coming down the pipeline and see where their students stand. It's kind of workshop-y and informational at the same time. It's kind of being created. Cory's put a lot of time into it, and I really appreciate her efforts, but it's really going to help our students and parents understand where their kids need to be for these different levels of distinction as they go on through the four years of school, because it's something new and it's something different. So I thank Cory for all of her help that she's put into coordinating that. But if you'd like to stop by tomorrow, six o'clock, we actually have to host it in the gym, because we have seventy-nine families that have registered. Some of them are bringing two, three, four, or five people, so we're expecting over two hundred people, and we didn't really have a place with tables. We have our beautiful new projector, Jim, thank you very much, in our gym that we'll be using to, you know, show the slideshow presentation. So that's tomorrow night. But as far as kind of the highlight of tonight, and at this point in time, I would actually like my very good friend, Hasina Shaheed Jackson, to come and join me up here. And I know you guys heard me talk about her a little bit when I first, we first started introducing what we called our Dinner and Conversation Series. So Hasina and I, we work together. We both serve on the Board of Directors for the Simley Park Chamber of Commerce. And again, as I told you before, she offered her services. Hey, Teresa, why don't you let me come to Simley and talk about how, how I can help out? She's an author, she's a speaker, she's a presenter. She's just fabulous. She came in over the summer, Randy and I sat with her, and we kind of talked about how Randy and I are very passionate about connecting parents to our school, and especially after COVID. When everybody wants to stay away, we are actually saying, come back, come back. It was through her guidance and her leadership that she offered us a program to take our parents and our teenagers to try to replicate the dinner table and actually have a nice conversation that has nothing to do with homework, laundry, picking up your room, putting gas in the car, whatever it may be. So she shared with us the three values that we would talk about. The first one was hope, the second one was listening, and the third one was forgiveness. We had, we invited our families to come. We had dinner in the cafeteria, and then it segued into Hasina moderating a conversation about each of these three traits. List joined us for the listening portion, and I just have to tell you, well, number one, I am here to say thank you. I wanted you to meet this amazing woman. I think our President of the Chamber of Commerce, Randy, is here. Rocco on the executive, or on the board is here, just to say thank you to the Chamber for their support. But there's really something here, and I, I can't really put my finger on it just yet, but the conversations that were had in our cafeteria on those three nights, as I said to the parents when we left, it wasn't like you walked out of there going, yeah, that was awesome. You just left feeling good, because you talked about things that we don't really take the time to talk about anymore. And that was definitely led by her expertise in a very open, nonjudgmental, hey, what are you thinking about? What are you feeling? How can we get to know each other better, and how can you have better conversations with your teenagers? And to me, that's just so important, because I think that's the part, even I learned a lot. I'm sitting there thinking, oh, I got to listen to my kids a little bit better. You know, you get so busy, you get caught up in things, and just the little reminders that she took each one of us through was very powerful. So number one, I wanted the board to meet Hasina. I did talk about her at the SSC Roundtable with the other fourteen principals a couple, last week. I think she might be pretty busy. She better never forget her roots here, you know? There are three more values, which are...
Multiplication and value in every person. I can't remember the third one for some reason. It escapes me, but...
There's three more that we're going to bring up in the, in the second semester. So I just wanted, I see that I have an opportunity to say hello to you guys, maybe share a little bit of her experience, and again, just really a big thank you. So the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. So the whole thing is our approach to this, because I think about when I was raised, how we focused on values, and I think in some ways, we have lost our way in having those conversations, because we play on our phones, or we go watch TV, or we also hook up into other things. But why can't we have these conversations to let us come back to basics and just open up and be authentic, be vulnerable, and share how you feel, and then also let the very young ones see how you feel and how they feel, so that you can have those conversations instead of, like you said, do, do your homework, did you take the trash out? Did you wash the dishes? But let's come together and have those discussions that we might not never have, because we're so busy doing things that are, that are really not as important as us sitting here having conversations. And so I came to Teresa and I approached her about this, because I really wanted to help us get back to how we can be a close-knit family, because family is what it's all about. I remember when I was a child growing up, when you walked down the neighborhood, everybody knew who you were, because we had that solid foundation. And I just wanted us to all come back together again and have that solid foundation again, and let's have those discussions that when we leave here, we can go home and then continue having those conversations, and then continue then going forward and maybe having a conversation with someone else that you never know, because you never know how you impact another person, so that's what multiplication is about, too, is planning forward and giving back, and that's what I wanted to do.
And she hit a home run. So again, welcome, thank you to Hasina and the board and everybody that's here tonight. I know you have a letter from one of the parents who attended all three sessions with their daughter and were very participatory, and she was just very moved by the experience, and she wanted to make sure that you guys got a copy of that letter. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that you got the thank you that you deserved.
Thank you to all our principals for those great reports. Moving on to our academic presentation, Dr. Williams. Thank you, Mrs. Russell, Board Member. If you would, if this is a moment. So good evening, Board and guests. I'm here to present the school report card that was just released recently and give a kind of a, sorry, we have our mic here for the play, we can't move it right now, so bear with me. I just want to kind of give a quick history on reporting, because a lot has changed over the last few years. Remind everyone of our ISB goals, the components of ESSA, where we're at, and what initiatives we are working on. So if you remember back to two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen, we had No Child Left Behind, where we took various assessments. Back then, it was the ACT, then it switched to PARC. It primarily focused on proficiency. There were lower cut scores and benchmarks, and there were district designations. In two thousand and eighteen, two thousand, two thousand and nineteen, the federal government redefined NCLB, and now it's the Elementary Secondary Education Act, where schools received designations. There were weighted scores in different categories focused on growth with higher benchmark scores. And then COVID hit in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, where the federal government granted a waiver to the state, so students were taking assessments, but there were no designations. Now we're back to twenty twenty-two, we're back to ESSA and implementation of designations. A reminder of our state goals. Again, ninety percent of the students are on track to graduate in four years. Ninety percent of our students will be college and career-ready, and that we're supporting our students with a healthy learning environment. These are the components of ESSA. Remember, seventy-five percent comes from academics, seven and a half percent from ELA proficiency, which is the evidence-based reading and writing portion of the SAT, seven and a half percent for math. Graduation rate at fifty percent. This is a compilation of our four-year, five-year, six-year graduation rates. EL, progress to proficiency, so that is our students' performance on the access score and how they're proficienting out of services. And the ISA is the Illinois Science Assessment. For the last, for this school year, the points that we earned is based on the students that took the test. It had nothing to do with proficiency. Next year, it goes back to how did they actually perform? This year is, did they just take it? So that's seventy-five percent of our report card. Twenty-five percent of our report card comes from chronic absenteeism, and I'll talk about what that definition means. Our freshman on track is eight point three three percent. Climate survey is, did our students just take the survey? And we get points based on participation. In the fall of twenty twenty-five, and both fall of twenty twenty-five, college and career readiness, which I talked about two committee of the whole meetings ago, all of our CCR indicators, dual credit, all those things, we will start receiving performance on that area, and then fine arts also will come out in twenty twenty-five. So right now, those don't have any weight. What is our story? As a reminder, we, these are the board goals. We agree that all students can learn. We know that students, those that learn at an appropriate rate can do better. We know that some students need a little bit more support, but we also recognize that there are some students that are not achieving, and we know that they can do better as well. So we're constantly focused on making sure that all students find success. Our three areas of focus, academic achievement, college and career development, and learning environment. We have key data points that we look at all throughout the year. I'm not going to be presenting on all of these tonight, but we're always looking at PSAT data, we're looking at grad rate, we're looking at freshman on track, we're looking at suspensions, chronic absenteeism, minor infractions, again, attendance. All of these pieces come into play when it comes to achieving our overarching goal that students will be college and career-ready by the time they graduate. So in the area of the academic achievement, I thought it was important just to, to reestablish a baseline. There, I can't compare the data to last year, because we're still coming off COVID. And really, to compare it back to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen wouldn't be a fair comparison, because everything has changed. We're still feeling the effects of COVID on especially student learning. Not drastically, but enough that it wouldn't be a fair comparison. So it's difficult to compare graduating classes like I normally do. So we're going to start with class of twenty twenty-two being the baseline for moving forward. So in the area of ELA proficiency, this is our performances, our average score on evidence-based reading and writing by school. I know you can't see the benchmark for college board is four eighty, and the state average in this area was four eighty-seven. In terms of math proficiency, college board benchmark is five-ten. The state average was four seventy-four. Again, we do have some work to do in this area, and I'll talk about some of the initiatives, how we're addressing ELA and math proficiency. We had a little bit of dip in COVID where it was remote. We are pretty much back on track to where we actually were pre-COVID in terms of our pass rate. The key is what we strive for is opening the door. We don't want to deny students the opportunity to take an AP course, we want them to challenge themselves. So it's finding that balance between pushing them, supporting them. At the end of the day, we're not always concerned about the passing of the course because for some students, it was a challenge just to be in the class. We want them to be exposed to that rigor. Now is the next step of how can we get a few more students over that hurdle to earn a three. Chronic absenteeism, this is one, so chronic absenteeism is defined as students missing more than 10% of the school year. We know this is an issue for our students, you know, several Principals have mentioned our students are dealing with a lot of mental health issues coming out of COVID, so we know that that is an issue that we're continuing to tackle. We're also stressing, and I'm going to be stressing it tomorrow night with families, it's really important for kids to be in school. It's really important for them to be here, engaged, finding what motivates them to be here because that is an area that we're struggling with. Our summative designation, so the state takes all of this data, puts it together into a formula and then calculates our overall designation, can be one of four exemplary, commendable, targeted or comprehensive. All four of our high schools are commendable, which means that while we are not in the top 10% of all schools, we have no underperforming student groups compared to those that ended up in the lower performing groups. And we also must have a graduation rate higher than 67%, which we all do. So our academic initiatives to address, we're really focusing on evidence-based reading and writing and math improvement for our SAT. And what we're doing is linking students, so when they take their PISA, if they haven't already, the scores are actually starting to come out in the next few weeks, linking them to Khan Academy, which is a free website where they can get in and get prescriptive practice in their deficient areas and it's all individualized. We'll be pushing that out in our English and Math classes. And also, all four of our buildings continue to do SAT prep and making sure that students are exposed and having more practice with the exam. And also improving our access scores, focusing on some prep activities and also speaking and writing is our deficiency areas with our English learners and making sure that they're getting more practice, speaking and writing in English. So those are going to be our two major areas, among other things that we're focusing on, but specifically addressing those two areas. Questions?
Can you email that to us?
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Is microphone better being poured?
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for the report. Moving on to Board reports, do we have any Board member reports?
I just want to say I had an opportunity to present that Oak Forest's...
Village meeting?
Village meeting, thank you so much. They were very impressed with our career guide that we were offering our kids and stuff. In fact, they sent a email, they wanted more of those books and we put in their office so they can, even if they're walking and see what's... It really went really well.
Yeah, thanks for representing us, we did drop off more, I appreciate that feedback and you had me to carry that the next time, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Captain. Any other Board member reports? All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, item 5.5, bills, addendum to bills, payroll, TDS bills, Ms. Morrison.
Item 5.1 are our November bills, addendum to bills, payroll and TDS bills, these items are being recommended for full board approval.
Some move. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Campworth, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item 5.2, Ms. Morrison?
Item 5.2 is our 2022 tentative tax levy, this item is being recommended for full board approval.
Some move. Moved by Ms. Campworth, second by Mr. Whitcomb, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Campworth, aye. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Item 5.3?
Item 5.3 is the FY 2023 Property Tax Relief Grant Application. With this year's grant, we would be abating $3,912,837 and then our grant amount in return would be $3,833,158. This item is being recommended for a full board approval.
Some move. Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins?
Under leads, Alexa Pickett, Leah Fisher and Juan Martinez. Under resignations, Monica Shigey and Emily Humisch. Under retirement, Shelley Wader. Under employment, Anthea Sherrill, Arwa Ali, Mike Clemson and Crystal Goulish. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
Some move. Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins?
Under leads, Alexa Pickett, Leah Fisher and Juan Martinez. Under resignations, Monica Shigey and Emily Humisch. Under retirement, Shelley Wader. Under employment, Anthea Sherrill, Arwa Ali, Mike Clemson and Crystal Goulish. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
Some move. Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to item seven, closed session, can I get a motion to go to closed session to consider the information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees? Section 5 ILCS 122(c)(2) and collective negotiating matters of Section 5 ILCS 122(c)(2). Some moves. Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. List, roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins?
Under leads, Alexa Pickett, Leah Fisher and Juan Martinez. Under resignations, Monica Shigey and Emily Humisch. Under retirement, Shelley Wader. Under employment, Anthea Sherrill, Arwa Ali, Mike Clemson and Crystal Goulish. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
Some move. Second. Moved by Mr. Whitcomb, second by Ms. Gleason, any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Whitcomb?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Wrestler?
Aye.
Moving on to item seven, closed session, can I get a motion to go to closed session to consider the information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees? Section 5 ILCS 122(c)(2) and collective negotiating matters of Section 5 ILCS 122(c)(2). Some moves.